There you go. Okay, well, everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Did you want to state the time again since we just started the recording?
All right, it is now 6:32. Okay, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So roll call, we have Commissioner Huggins, Commissioner Freiburger, Commissioner Fattizi, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Fernet, and Commissioner Pennau all present. Commissioner Johnson is currently not here, but if he gets here later on, we'll just make a note to that. So has everybody, excuse me, had the ability to take a look at the 18th meeting minutes? There's only, there's only one change on page two. We have Commissioner Higgins instead of Commissioner Huggins.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
Okay, so that second sentence, Commissioner Higgins instead of Huggins, spoke in favor of the Northwest style designs. So that's all I have. Does anyone else have any comments on the meeting minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Commissioner Pennau makes the first motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Freiburger seconds, motion passes. And we now move on to general public comments. So John, it would be a mail-in kind of thing. Did you get anything or?
Well, we've changed it up a little bit. First, I've changed it to say people can make comments during this time.
Okay.
But we've also given the opportunity for mail-in or email. And we have not received any mailed or emailed comments.
Okay, you know, I just looked at that. Yeah, I'm just, my brain is still wired to the past. So if anyone is in the audience that is dialed in and would like their three minutes to have any comments, we'd like to hear you. And if not. Okay, I will now close the general comment section at 6:34 PM. So moving on to unfinished business. Updates to the CEDRWA design review standards and guidelines manual to address buildings in the central business district. So I'm sure everyone's probably taken a look at what was included in the packet. So John, why don't you take it from here? Before we get into it.
All right, well, this is a little different than the packet that you saw. Oh, there's Eric.
Okay, let it be noted that Commissioner Johnson is now present at 6:35 PM.
All right, so Commissioner Johnson did not miss anything besides Pledge of Allegiance and approving the minutes. We're just about to start discussion of the agenda items, the unfinished business, the updates to the CEDRWA design standards. So last month, we canceled the meeting because most of the planning commission could not be here. So we took that opportunity to do some further work on the design standards from that time until now. So if you looked at these back in June, these updates look a little different. The main changes. We still haven't got to a whole lot of substantive stuff. Catherine was working on this and her time became very valuable and started to run out of, run out of time to do all of these, but we, what, what we really noticed is when you look at each of the design standards chapters, you know, the additional standards for the UVMU, the general standards, the additional standards for multifamily, et cetera. They all have like guidelines, standards in, in sections broken down in bullets. And then you look at the additional standards for the central business district as it's written, and it's mostly a narrative. And that narrative kind of throughout the narrative, there's the occasional standard hidden in there. And so we began a process to reformat how it was written. So we think a lot of the narrative that was there was important because it paints a picture and describes what the city is interested in and gives some backdrop to the past development in the central business district. But then frankly, this is one of the difficulties that staff had administering this is there wasn't really anything to look at and say, well, you shall do this, this, and this. Buildings need to have these aspects and those aspects. And so we went through and reformatted it so we can make it more like the existing, the other chapters in the design standards. So that's why you'll see, you know, new standards and guidelines or a general storefront profile. And then some additional standards for awnings. And then doors and windows. But we mimicked what the, the rest of the design standards look like. A lot of the effort was focused on taking what we already had in there and, and rewarding it and putting it out there for the planning commissioner, for anyone, any reader, not just the planning commission, to be able to go through the design, the central, standards for the central business district and be able to look at that bullet points and make sense out of it. So there wasn't a whole lot of new added to it. And the planning commission's been giving ideas of what they wanted to see in the design standards. And we tried to incorporate those. So if we've missed any of those, or if we misinterpreted what the planning commission was asking to be put in, let us know. I recognize that this still needs a lot of work. You can see that nothing for signs has been done, sign design. And nothing for the last section decorative, no, sign lighting hasn't really been touched. And we also recognize that there's other sections in each of the other design standard sections that need to be drawn over into this. We were just addressing the, some of the existing ones and starting from there. So there, there unfortunately, there's still a lot of work to do. I apologize to the planning commission for not having more for you to review. I recognize your, your time is valuable and want to, want to bring you a lot of good information to review. And this is much lighter than we had intended for it to be. But we do have something for the planning commission to review. We would love your feedback on it, how you think this is going, how you think it's being built so far. If, if that seems good. And just any other discussion items that you've come up, come up with. I've one, one thing to talk about as far as new stuff going on the CBD. There's been some painting of downtown issue building, CBD buildings. And I wanted to get the planning commission's input on the, the new paint jobs. Also, so that's about all I have to, to present to the planning commission on this new design standards update. So I was hoping to have a little bit of conversation about it and get, get some more direction and feedback.
What's to go first?
Well, um, I guess I'll go if that's okay. First, I wanted to say I, I really like how it's been reformatted. It struck me when I was reading through it that it was just too conversational and anecdotal. So reorganizing it to be consistent with the other parts of the code seems very, it makes sense. It was interesting to me how you just reorganized it and it just flowed better and was really, it made more sense. As you said, it's easier to, to see what exactly we're looking for in the way of requirements versus suggestions, basically. For that.
John, I actually pulled the design standards manual to follow it along because I got a little bit lost in like the third page when that elements listed A through J, but it was, it was no big deal. So on M, I mean, the whole thing that kind of started this discussion was the garage door style thing. So on M, we have large operable window and/or doors that create dynamic usable space, interface of public and private space for dining seating, retail, or similar. So is it here that you potentially want to insert some language on the type of window or doors? Are we just being general at this point? And as we get deeper down into the guidelines, that's where we'll define the actual material slash construction of what we're looking for.
No, that should be here, so.
I mean, we like the fact we can move this stuff around, but where, where do you want to define the?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I see what you're saying. So, well, first of all, yes, I'll add A through J just to make it easier to follow. Instead of having the reader have to go back to the general standard.
It made me look too, so that, that's fine.
But you know, do you think it would be better if we, if I did it that way? If we added A through J to that, would that be easier for everybody?
I think so. Just to Joe's comment, we have a whole section on doors and windows. And it seems to me like the specific requirements for the materials and style of those items, it makes sense to leave all that in the doors and windows section as opposed to cluttering up this checklist sort of section.
I agree. I agree with Silas. And as far as listing A through J at the minimum, put as seen on page 14 of the design standard. So they have a place to go back to.
Yeah, I'll probably just list them because as we make amendments over the years, pages change. So it's tough to direct the reader to a specific page because that may change over time.
So I'm just assuming that when we're done with this, which is going to take a little bit of time, the current manual has replaced by the November 2018 update. So this will replace that with whatever we come up with in 2021. I'm just assuming that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, what I anticipate doing is on the cover, right now it says adopted 2004, updated 2018. I just changed that 2021 to change it from 2018 to 2021.
Were we being aggressive on that?
Oh, I think we can get this done in 2021. You, you're bringing up a, an, an interesting point that's off topic. But you know, I do, when, when we get to the planning commission discussion items, I want to talk to the, talk to you all about what's going on. You know, it's been, it's been a little bit berserk in the development industry lately. So and then our office part in particular. So I want to give you an update of just what's going on in this, in the, the planning and building department. So don't let me forget to do that.
John, um, just a, a kind of a question. I see that the paragraph right above the standards for under general storefront, front profile, the one that talks about the Art Nouveau.
The one that starts generally speaking.
Yes, yes, yes.
And you're probably wondering, why is it underlined when it's existing language?
No, I see that it was moved, but I'm kind of wondering, just the, the way it flows, if it might some reference, if maybe not the whole paragraph needs to go right after the intent. Because when it says historically storefront architecture in Northwest, it, it kind of is vague there and it's like, it's explained later that it was that style. But you're kind of left going, okay, when are we talking here? So maybe even just a reference like it's later referenced at 1900 to 1930 is kind of what we're looking at here. Just, I don't, I don't know if, if it's really necessary to clarify it because it is clarified later on. But it, it just was something I was thinking about. Then does that make sense or not?
No, if, if it, if it should be moved up earlier to flow better, that, that's, that makes sense. What's interesting is it used to be the last paragraph of the sentence and it got moved up a little. So you're recommending that we put it before which, before which paragraph?
Um, so right after the first paragraph in intent under general storefront profile and before the second paragraph that starts historically, I, I don't know. Then maybe that paragraph would be somewhat redundant. It just, it seemed like a background paragraph. And so it's odd to put it later on when you're talking about what defines that era, but haven't defined the era until later on. So.
I'll, I'll look, I'll play around with it and see if that, if I can make, make it flow better. I may just have to, you know, rewrite a lot of it to, to just make it flow better.
Also, I noticed at paragraph, oh, five, so it's the bottom of page 10, that paragraph that starts special decorative attention at entries is significant. That last line is partially deleted, but only partially. So it's, it's a partial sentence fronts also often displayed. And then dental detailing of cast masonry or brick or combinations of masonry. That part is crossed out. So it's, so I don't know if there's something else that's supposed to go there or if that whole thing is supposed to be deleted.
I'll have to reread it and see. Maybe I can have Catherine work on it when she's on the plane. I've, I've threatened, I've threatened to give her, give her work for her flight a, a bunch while she was during her last few days. So that's kind of an inside joke, sorry about that.
We are going to miss her.
Yeah.
It's a long, I just need something to do anyway.
Any more suggestions, requests? Direction?
How do you spell dining? It looks like dining number in M.
D I N I N G, dining.
I think there's one too many ends in dining.
Thank you.
Well, can I talk about awnings for a second? In the last meeting, you talked about marquees being different than awnings and there's I couldn't find where it talked about that other than it's preferable to have them fixed. But the word wasn't there. Now I gotta find it. Okay, I found it. Under guidelines of just the four doors and windows. It says guidelines for awnings encouraged. Number two, permanent awnings constructed of wood or metal and that meet all other design review standards are encouraged with, with, could we use the word marquee? If that's a standard word in architecture?
I'll look into it.
Okay.
Did, we want to define or differentiate between canopies and awnings or, or make the comment that they're similar? I, I, I don't know. That was a note I had based on the Snohomish standards that we looked at last time.
So the, according to this, you're saying according to the Snohomish standards that canopies are different than awnings and they define both those?
I need to look back at that. I just had a note here that about it. So perhaps I should not comment further until I look up the Snohomish one and see what exactly it had said.
Sounds reasonable. Sounds legit to me.
One more question on awnings. We were talking about which style of how do I say this, design standards look the best from the other cities? I know we were all putting a word in for one place or another, why it was good or bad. Are we going to add photos or drawings or anything to these to clarify what we're talking about?
Oh, absolutely. Right now, I just wanted to get the, the bones done. And then, then comes the fun part of, you know, looking for pictures, taking photos. And what, what inevitably happens is when you start putting photos and illustrations in, it messes up the format like just all day. So I want to leave that to the end so we don't get jammed up on little formatting details like that are going to goof it up and we'll work on that as we get closer to a finished copy. But we definitely want to have photos and illustrations and maps and that makes, makes it all a bit more readable.
Yeah. So therefore we don't have to bend over backwards describing things if we can say as shown in figure one or something.
I'm going to make a note for that because that's a good idea.
So I found the, what I was looking at in awnings and canopies, they don't seem to really differentiate. And it was actually, it looks like Sumner. It was their guideline. So I guess if they're not really differentiating and we just want to keep with the word we're using. It just made me think of it when the commissioner was talking about marquee. So I was just looking at that. So they reference both apparently. And I misspoke. There is actually a separate definition for awning than canopy. I don't, I don't know if it's actually worth differentiating. Apparently an awning is fabric covering structure mounted on the face of the building above a window, entrance or storefront opening, providing weather and/or sun protection. Canopy and architectural structure made of permanent materials such as metal or wood mounted on the face of the building above a window entrance or storefront opening, providing weather and/or sun protection. So if we're allowing both, then I don't know, do we need to define it?
I'll look into the definition of canopy because that really, that really defined more of a marquee. And marquee is usually the architectural term used. I prefer at least the way my brain understands it now. I prefer canopy at this time, but I'll look into canopy or or marquee.
I'm seeing that canopies are considered a fabric covering for shelter for a freestanding structure such as a pergola. So with the awning being one that's attached to the exterior wall to provide shade over a window, door, patio. Canopies considered something over a freestanding?
Oh, I like that definition. And is that also in the Sumner?
No, that's on my Google. Sorry. And I was getting myself confused with the markings on this. That was actually in Snohomish is where I found the, the canopy. So was right first time.
Oh.
Apologies.
Who's running this meeting? Oh, I'm just leaking some of the stuff. On that, back to the guidelines, fabric should be a solid color or stripe. You know, that was one of the things I, I believe that when the doors went up at the bullpen, it was like that bright white and the other part of the building was a totally different color. I mean, this is pretty general here that if you want to put up like a neon kind of green or, or whatever, I mean, is it something that we should consider that it needs to be compatible with the surrounding, with the building that it's attached to or the surrounding buildings in general? Because I think of places that everybody has different awnings to stand on out. I, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was talking about back in May when we were talking about horizontal modulation. I think mostly I was talking about vertical modulation of the, of the buildings. And, and when you build a, a new building on the site or you're ma- making major alterations, you need to be sympathetic to the, the modulation of the build, buildings on either side of you. And I was trying to figure out whether that was under standard storefront. under standard storefront, if that was P where it says notable building articulations vertically and horizontally or similar architectural features that meet the intent of the section and I wouldn't call it articulation, I'd call it modulation if that was supposed to cover it. Because you have to have it to be sympathetic. So like I was saying, if the guy had made some kind of had the money to put in some kind of a pull down door or sliding door that that from the how to explain it? I don't remember trying to remember what building is next door to that. I think there's some 1950s buildings next door to it. So it's not a good example, but anyway, if you had another Art Nouveau building next to it, you would you would try and start your windows at the same height that they started their windows at and end them at the same height that they started theirs at. And if your door goes below that, then below that you would try and simulate what what the modulation of the building was below the window. And so anyway, I think that's a really important piece of it. I mean, it's the main thing for me. If you do that and you stick with the Art Nouveau, I mean, they didn't use neon green and Art Nouveau, at least not usually on the outsides, maybe on the sign or inside. But anyway, I think if you are being true to Art Nouveau and you follow the modulation of the other buildings on either side of you are sympathetic to them, then you're gonna come out okay with your design.
Any more comments on those guidelines? And yes, Joe, I'm just letting everybody put it out there as we go through this. So feel free to comment on anything as we go down through the doors and windows now.
And since I'm still, I'm yakking and nobody else piped up, I was gonna ask the question. So in my mind, the marquees are the flat the flat awnings that usually had like like a movie thing above it where they had the the movie sign that told you what the movies were coming, but it was sitting on a flat, a flat. That's a marquee style. Is that correct? And then awning is the kind that you can either crank up or they're fixed. But they are, they're sloped. And then I also wanted to comment that the reason that we had allowed the fixed was at the time that we created design standards, the first time about half of the awnings in town had been replaced by fixed solid metal ones with shingles and shakes on them, you know, which was kind of unique to there wasn't any other towns around that had shingle and shake awnings around. So it was kind of a thing. And then also the people who owned those buildings were saying, I hate awnings because I have to replace them every three years because they fade out and I can't afford that. And if I put in a shake roof or whatever, lasts for thirty, forty years and I don't have to worry about it. So that was just some background on why we why we were allowing the fixed ones that could use wood and other things and other materials.
Oh, I see. So so some sort of maybe awning is not the best word, but a a covered area that's not flat, but is is fixed is what you're trying to achieve, trying to allow.
Well, I think we want variety within the Art Nouveau style. I think a lot of the buildings when they were built were intended to have the flat, what I'm calling marquee awnings because they had transom windows above the above them. So if you put up an awning, you block your light that would come in through the transom windows. And if you if you have the flat marquee type, then the light can come in through those through the through the transom windows. So I suspect that all the ones that if you look up from inside the building and see where they've either painted the glass over or covered the glass over up there, those were intended to have flat marquee type awnings. And then if it didn't have that, if there were no windows up in there, then they were designed to have a a either a roll up or crank up awning or a fixed, you know, canvas cloth or whatever awning. And I'd love to see some nicely done glass ones. Glass awnings are awesome.
So two of those pitched outdoor covers have recently been removed. One was the one at the the Domino's was been Domino's for several years. And it was falling apart and dangerous. And so they just took it down. Another one was over next to the sparkle shop. There was, this has been several years now. There was the one that was a cedar pitched awning out the front. And when they were taking it down, they they were astounded that it stayed up because it was incredibly heavy. You know, maybe it was tile. It was incredibly heavy. And there really wasn't much of a structure there. So that one went away and I forget what they replaced that one with. But both were improvements because those existing ones, while cool and idea and looked good in their day, were really failing and becoming dangerous because they're overhead on a walkway could injure pedestrians.
Yeah, and I'm not certain, but I assume that some of those were just built on top of the marquee awnings that were already there and 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 so they weren't specifically structurally built to hold up tiles or cedar shakes. They just kind of just tacked them on top of the of the marquees. So it's probably a miracle that one of them didn't come down on somebody.
Are we ready to move down to doors and windows? Any more comments on awnings? That works.
I had a note about noting limited number of colors on a building. I believe we talked about that previously. Was that something that we were not going to do or been a while? So.
Believe it was a consistency issue that you're looking for continuity between color schemes and adjoining structures. How you actually codify something like that? I mean, here even on the awnings, fabric should be a solid color. That's pretty general, right? That's where you might want to put language like that in.
Once again, I think Art Nouveau style, they didn't do a massive amount of colors, you know, like Victorian painted ladies had sometimes three, four different colors in the schemes instead of the two tones that you would find in a normal Victorian. But but I think Art Nouveau in and of itself kind of defines that it's not going to have more than probably three at the most.
Three is pretty typical.
By the way, I really like the I really liked the new paint job at Volan since you asked for that, those comments, except for their little blue sky triangles on the side street. But the front of it is, I mean, anything was an improvement, but but the colors are better and the modulation of the building makes it look much, much nicer to me, to my eye now that that they've painted the two tones and turns out I like the colors too. So.
Should we? Should we look at creating something that prohibits a blue that is not in the same color palette as, you know, the rest of the colors? What we're seeing is consistently with blue on the buildings downtown, it not sure if the blue is a very successful color, even though it is the seedra woolly blue often. It, I don't know, what is the planning commission think about how blue fits in with with the historic downtown?
Okay, well, I'll pipe in again. So I like the blue and I like because I guess because I grew up here, but it's a good blue, but I don't think it goes with Art Nouveau. And yet, everybody's gonna want to use it because it shows support for the for our schools and the district. So I don't know how you're gonna, I don't know how you're gonna word that, you know, maybe it can't be in the building paint job, but it can be in, you know, ad and window displays and all that kind of stuff. But anyway, that's probably the direction I would I would go. But anyway.
I mean, is it a concern of the planning commission of the historic buildings using maybe not specifically the blue, but it often ends up being that particular blue. I mean, is there any concern or do we not worry about it?
What would be an example of a building that you would take and make into that cup blue or do something on a storefront that would stick out and not blend in with what we're trying to do with the
Well, the exterior, the 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 blue on the marquee of the bullpen.
Okay.
Matching with that white and then the blue on the top of the Volans building. Also.
Anyone? Pat, you seem to be, you know, you seem to have really spent the, well, no, because you you have the history here and you've spent quite a bit of time with this over the years and this isn't anything new. So now we have a chance to go through it again and potentially tighten things up. That is businesses move forward, there's more consistency and standards with what everybody's trying to achieve and then you know, have a an overall consistent pattern going up Metcalf.
Yeah, so that's exactly the reason why, believe it or not, I was actually kind of trying to bite my tongue a little bit because I was here for the I guess I got on the planning commission just after the first guidelines were created and we tweaked them a little bit. And so I don't want to drive the whole conversation of it. The main thing for me was is the modulation. It's just like, it's like on the Volan building, the Volan building looks great from what I can see going by, except I don't understand why they painted the slanted blue thing on the side unless they were trying to hide the step back, the step downs on the on the side street and and you can still see them and it's not the color of the sky and on a cloudy day, it's not the color of the sky. So I just, I don't really understand why they why they did that, that color wasn't necessary. So anyway, I don't know, I always shy away from being too restrictive. I would just, I would just say that the if you're being true to Art Nouveau and you're following the, you know, being sensitive to the modulation of the buildings on either side of you, if they are Art Nouveau, then you are, then you are probably going to come up with a pretty good building, you know, it's I guess that's the guiding thing. And then that's up to the director, you know, John's perfectly capable of telling them, you know, that, hey, you know, the your windows are your window, bottom window millions coming in at halfway up their window over the next to it, you know, can you try and can you try and tame that a little bit and get it more modulated similar to that? Or is that gonna make your design impossible or blah, 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 and the same with colors and all that. So anyway, I just tend to shy to the side of giving as much freedom to the person who's doing the design as possible and to the planning directors to to, you know, work it out with them. That's where I am on most things.
You know, over the coming year, it's going to be important because I believe there's that one vacant lot from the fire. So we're probably gonna get a brand new structure there. So it's gonna be really important to whoever designs that building to have some type of visibility on what we're looking for. Because architects are expensive and building design is expensive. And at the end of the day, that's gonna be right on a pretty main corner. So it's important that what gets done there is consistent with the vision of what we're trying to put together here. Are we ready to move on to doors? And I'm sorry, John.
That's a, that's a really important point because you know, there's nothing in here right now that says you need to build a brick building or include any brick in your building. So somebody could build the way our current design standards are. It seems like somebody could build something that looks like, I don't know, something at a strip mall.
Right.
I don't know that it's strong enough as it was currently written. We're working on it now, but that's exactly what you want to think about as you're reviewing these is, hey, when that building gets rebuilt at the corner, we want it to look historic or we want it to look Northwest style or we want it to look, you know, if we have a vision for what we want to look for or at least a vision for what we don't want it to look like. We got to make sure that it's in there, you know, we're right now, we're seeing the new building going in across from the old Ford dealer where the sinking house was. And that's the best we could do with their design standards is to allow that and it kind of has a storefront, you know, on the front. And then from the side that you see it from mostly, that storefront is clearly false. So I want our design standards to give our staff the ability to say, hey, no, you just need to do this. You need to either use brick or wood or whatever. The building's not bad. But there's a couple of, you know.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Yeah, here I am, the person who said let them do their thing, but but then
We wouldn't want that in our, right on Metcalf Street for sure.
Yeah.
So just a reminder, as you're going through this, think of, that's probably a really good exercise, you know. What do we want to see at the corner of Metcalf and Woodworth? And then also filter, you know, what do we want at the old Ford dealership when that eventually redevelops?
Yeah, it's gonna be big.
That's what I try to do, you know, imagine what we would want. You know, maybe over at the Ford dealership, the Northwest style, like kind of like the library would would fit in. Or City Hall, whereas on Metcalf Street, that's, you know, that's the planning commission's vision. If you want, if you want something like City Hall to be okay downtown, then we're great. If the planning commission thinks it should look historic, like like the gateway building, you know, then we're clearly going to have to have some specific standards for Metcalf Street downtown. But, you know, we never did in the past and we've got a nice mix of buildings downtown. So now I'm bringing the devil's advocate part of this. Do we need to have anything special? So it's really just what the planning commission thinks is going to be appropriate in that downtown area. Just keep that in mind as we go through these. And we can move on to the next section.
Yeah, I guess at the end of the day, if we're providing standards for in the CBD specifically, from everything from the type of signs and illuminated signs and just a whole host of different things. It makes sense to keep that as a distinct and unique area to keep that, again, that consistency of what we're trying to accomplish in an historic area. So, yeah, it's definitely worth not only discussing, but the refining for somebody else coming on in, especially for new construction that they do have guidelines of what we'd like to see. And it's really not that difficult to do. There's so many different materials that you can absolutely do what we're looking to do. That's not going to add any more cost than a Pacific Northwest style building or anything else.
So on your comment about the brickwork, do we want to make that more apparent? Because we talked about modulation and stuff, but I always was thinking more about you know, accents or, you know, doors and windows versus brickwork specifically. I don't know, is that something we can include? I don't know, is that something we can include? More specifically?
There are design standards, we can do whatever we want with them. I mean, I would. My personal preference. And I that. Doesn't mean anything here would be. To see some sort of brick. On the first floor or. Mix of first and second floors on the the historic feeling part of downtown. On Ferry Street. And that's based less on my personal preference. That was not the actual term. It's based on what I would. Expect the community to expect of us. So. If we're if, you know, the the planning department were to allow a. A wood, a a. A building downtown. That had no brick course on the bottom, you know, the first floor was just. Lap siding like a like a typical single family house. And was four stories tall. Of lap siding and maybe it would definitely have to change materials, but it didn't have brick. I I I feel like I would get a get a earful from the community. So I want to be sensitive to what the community wants, though. Pushing my personal preference.
You know, an example of that is looking at Iron Mountain, they're they're all. Wood up front that there's there's no brick there. And actually, that kind of stands out when you when you're coming on through if it wasn't for the fact that it's right next to the restaurant. Well, BYK, that's all, that's all glass there. But consistency going forward, especially for new construction. Yeah. Yeah, especially if we're looking for for brick style on the lower floor or second, both first and second floors. No, we're not going to put anything in, you know. In writing tonight, so to speak. So this is just putting out a lot of ideas. Are we ready to move on to doors?
Eric's got his hand up, I think.
What's that?
Eric. Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a different view. Go for it.
So, yeah, I'm gonna. Piggyback off of what John had to say. I think that it's important to at least have a brick dominant standard for buildings. You know, as. You know, as nice as Northwest style architecture is and how it's relevant to the fact that, well, we live in the Northwest. I don't think it has any real relevance to the downtown corridor. And. For me, you know, in my background, I'm all about precedent. So. You set a precedent of something. Not that's quote unquote historic to Seadrill Wally downtown. And which is predominantly brick buildings, you know, you kind of open up the door for other options. And so I think whatever we decide on. Has to be somewhat brick dominant. I'm not saying it necessarily has to be entirely brick building. I think that it does have to have. That dominance, though, because that's that's kind of the. Not only the motif of downtown, but it's also the historic. Heritage of downtown. And I think John's absolutely right, the the backlash that you would get. From the community is that people want it to be consistent. People are going to want it to feel like historic Seadrill Wally. As as they conceptualize it. And so. You know, having other materials be the dominant feature of the exterior buildings and. In the downtown corridor, at the very least, I'm talking about just. Primarily Metcalf, maybe a little bit of Ferry. You know, has to have that feel. I mean, I I apologize, I. I'm I'm a little bit at a struggle because I'm I'm trying to figure out a way. To word the fact that. What I think in talking with people. Is that they want like that historic feel, but at the same time. You know, allow for a little bit of creativity. I don't know if that's. Creativity within accents or. You know, kind of the detail of buildings. So it kind of has like more of a historic base with kind of. A little bit more of a a modern flair that fits with it. I don't I don't know, but I I definitely think that at the very least. There has to be that that consistency throughout downtown Seadrill Wally.
And what do you mean by downtown? Just to finish up on that thought.
By downtown, I I mean primarily like Metcalf Street. So from like Warner all the way up to. What would that be? Northern, just just south of Northern. That whole corridor right through there. I would probably throw in that small section of Metcalf from. The railroad over to. Murdoch, sorry, trying to think of all the streets here. Because that's still kind of. Downtown in a way, it still has that that feel and that characteristic. And then I'd throw Woodworth. All the way through from the. From the museum all the way over to the railroad. So that that that's how I conceptualize downtown.
Silas, you're up.
I tend to agree with the desire for. Brick buildings. I I just think we need to be careful about how we word things because. From nineteen hundred to nineteen thirty downtown Seadrill Woolly was almost entirely wood. From my understanding. And. It wasn't until the thirties that the majority of the brick buildings were built. And so. When we're talking in here about, you know, shooting for an, you know. Sort of referencing an era. You know, we need to be careful about how we do that, or or you know, at least be aware of that because. True historic Seadrill Woolly buildings oftentimes were wood and. My understanding is there's a big fire and they all burned down and that's when all the brick buildings were built. And so. I do think that. Having. At least like a like Commissioner Johnson said, a brick dominant sort of. Whether it's the first story or the first, you know, fifteen or twenty feet of the building or whatever it is. I think fits sort of within the current. View of downtown and like we said. What people might expect a new building in in the downtown core to be, but. I I I was just reading through, I can't remember exactly where it was, but there was a couple of references to that nineteen hundred, that sort of nineteen thirties era. And. Anyway, I just want to be. Be aware of, or you know, at least. Cognizant of that. As as we. Tune this thing in or dial it in.
If we're talking about the first story, well, the the ground level in particular. I see a lot of people want to put a lot of glass in, right? So we're going to get down into this to the doors and the windows. So integrating that with a stone front. Do we want to limit the amount of glazing instead of looking like a Macy's front door? I mean, frontage? Or do we want to just leave it open as long as there's? Brick on maybe first and second levels. I see a lot of glass going in all over the place. So you could literally eliminate most the entire front of the building if you're just going straight glass.
Are you referring to second stories? Like.
If if they just want pretty much all, you know, I mean, the sides are going to be. Brick, but you know, do we want to limit the amount of glazing as in you could have a whole glass front kind of like. Oliver Hammer, are we just going to keep that consistent? But it's the building we're talking about, not necessarily certain levels. That would not be brick. It could be the totally different material.
So I was I was. Pretty strongly going to include a requirement for storefront windows. On commercial streets. And commercial buildings. Because the the way the downtown is and encourage and required to wrap around the corner on, say, the new building. The Janiki Building doesn't have a lot of windows that go down Woodworth, nor does the. Building that was most recently the the library. Building, it doesn't have any windows going down Woodworth. But the the. The building, the the last remaining building in that. Corner does have a fair amount of windows down there. And so that was something to encourage walkability and shopping in the the CBD. I was I was going to be putting a fifty to seventy five percent storefront window requirement. You know, try to be reasonable about it, you know, it can't all be windows, I get it, but. The the new building on Ferry lacks the the storefront. Image that one would expect for a downtown. Storefront. So I wanted to see more than that.
I'm a glass fan myself. I mean, you could do so many really nice things with different types of glazing. I just wanted to bring it up to make sure it's consistent with everything else. Commissioner Maddox.
So now that we're talking about glass. Under standards, number one, these are the new standards, I guess, in red. Under the glazing, it says a minimum of fifty percent of exterior glass surfaces be multi-painted or gridded. And. That's super conf- I I have a few thoughts about this, but first of all, that it seems unclear because. I I don't know how you define multi-paint. I mean, any. Window over a certain size ends up being multi-painted because the panes of glass only get so big. So. And then gridded windows. I'm not, I mean, they can be done well if they're like old fashioned style steel frame or aluminum frame, you know, whatever they are. But. I wouldn't want to end up with. Modern double pane windows that have the grids inside of them because almost universally. Those look like. Really cheap and poorly, you know, I don't know why anybody pers- that's a personal pet peeve of mine, but. I I don't think it has any place in a commercial setting. And so. I. I just think that needs to be tightened up a little bit. I do like the. No less than sixty five percent glass display windows. So so I I'm in favor of a lot of glass. I think that. Anyway, so I don't know if John, if. If you had an idea about this, or if there's something I'm missing or whatever, but.
I can give you background and that's it. The multi-pane and gridded was taken directly from the existing language and just. Inserted here in this new format. So that didn't change. So that was an existing thing if if. I think that needs to be clarified, first of all, because this is going to be first floor. Like we want sixty five, you know, the minimum of fifty percent exterior glass. Well, first of all, that shouldn't, that's out of order. That you should talk about. First. It should be storefronts and facade shall consist of no less than sixty five percent glass display windows. With trim, da da da. I think the minimum of the exterior glass surface be multi-painted or gridded. I don't know how that would would look.
So I would.
Storefront windows shouldn't be gridded.
I I I would personally say that. There's. I'm spacing out on the technical terms for it, but there's molins which are. Divisions within the pain, within a pane, and then there's true divided, which are actually individual panes of glass or something. And we should probably check my terminology, but. I don't think we want gridded in there. I think that we want to make sure that. If. Glass surfaces are multi-paint, they're either. I think the term is true divided or else molynd, but. Anyway. I can't. It's been a little while since I had to. Deal with that in a technical aspect, but. Grid, anyway, gridded just brings up views of like. You know, suburban or, you know, tract home developments that have those cheap plastic grids inside of the windows and. They don't make anything look better. So, but i- i- in keeping with sort of the commercial high quality feel of it. The the windows need to be designed thusly, but I also wouldn't tend to. Limit the size of the panes, I mean. Anyway, I I don't know where else to go with that right now, but.
Commissioner Freiberger.
So what I thought of when I saw that about gridded windows is there are quite a few examples on on First Street in La Conner. Of that. And I actually just pulled up a Google Street View on that street and was just going down and and it's. Debatable as to whether that's a look we want, but. Definitely smaller panes. And some of them are actually each one is a separate pane and it can be very expensive. For them to be replaced. We had an owner who was looking at that and it was quite costly to do. So that's something to keep in mind as well. Now, I suppose there is a false look to that where it just looks like they're divided panes and they're not actually. They're not truly divided, but. Yeah, if if you're wondering about examples, there's a lot. In on First Street there.
Commissioner Huggins.
All right, so we we moved topics really, really quickly. So one, I support the the mostly brick. I I agree with that. And. One of the charms of Seadrill Wally's Main Street was that it was one of the few. Cities in Washington that survived. Impact, you know, most of them had fires and then they never, they never got their brick buildings back. So they had a lot of holes. Seadrill Wally had a main street. Whenever it was built, that was mostly brick facades and I wouldn't want to see those slowly go away and be replaced by wood or something else. The second thing was that I support the sixty five percent glass. Requirement and grids are usually colonial and federal. And this is Art Nouveau. So I I mean, I'm sure you could break it into the smaller panes, but it. Hopefully, it's not the god awful white. True separation ones like they have in the Northeast where my wife is from. So anyway, yeah, let's keep it Art Nouveau and and less. And most of those buildings were built, you know, the in the thirties were built as. You know, storefronts. And so they already had a lot of glass in them. And so I think that we want to, you know, the the modulation is already set up for large glass windows. They just have the new wall underneath them. That can be brick or brick or stone. So, yeah, that was the the main things. I just wanted to support the bricks, support the glass, and I don't think we have a problem if we stick Art Nouveau. With them being the colonial and federal white trimmed little tiny. Panes of gla- windows with with little panes of glass. Yeah, thank you.
We should have pen up.
So going back also, I just want to let everybody know that the fire, the July Great Fire of Seadrill Woolly was July twenty fourth in nineteen eleven. And all of the buildings were wood and twenty five of them burnt down. And it was within that year that they rebuilt them all, almost all in brick. So in nineteen eleven, nineteen twelve is when brick hit. But also I am for the brick. I like the brick. And I'm pretty good with the window situation. I agree with Pat on the little squares that look colonial. I wouldn't care for that either. But in that being said, I think Si- what Silas was talking.
But in that being said, I think Si- what Silas was talking about when you say grid, and I know I don't like those plastic ones either. Actually, I have sliding glass doors that have that right now. But, um, like the old doors in a Victorian house, you had your like fifteen panel glass. I mean, uh, that would still be considered in my opinion, Art Nouveau. Um, maybe not. Maybe if you painted it white, it would look more colonial. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know about the brick when we were built in brick. Cause I think that makes a difference to, um, the style that we've made mostly had.
Anyone else? Commissioner Frenette.
I second what Stacy just said. I'm, I'm all for the brick and I was just reading an article. Uh, incidentally, uh, this Saturday would be a hundred and ten years ago of that fire. But it says, uh, after the fire, several insurance carriers demanded that the former wood framed buildings be replaced with brick structures and firewalls erected between them. So I don't know what the new rules are on firewalls or separation between buildings, but if if they're building right smack up against that, uh, brick building on the corner there, I would think that you would want brick or fire separation of some sort.
Definitely requires fire separation when built up to a property line. Typically that's not going to be visible, so they'll use something cheap like cinder block.
So, yeah, I, I second or third or fourth the brick.
I haven't heard anything. Everybody, I believe, supports, uh, the, uh, brick, uh, construction, at least on the first and second floors. Anyone else?
So I guess that just brings us to, you know, how much is, is this, is the first floor enough brick? I mean, a, a three or four story brick building is, um, going to be uh, sorry, my phone was ringing. I had to stop that. Still a landline. A, a three or four story building that's all brick might not look as good as, and certainly not as contemporary and easy to build as a, uh, a building with, you know, cement board on the second, third and fourth stories, what we would typically see. Uh, but, and and knowing the local developers, they're, they're not going to have any, they're not going to have any heartache about being required to do brick or have some historic look on the first floor, but as if we start requiring them to go up to the third and fourth floor, we may see some pushback.
Commissioner Huggins.
Um, this is where the modulation thing comes in that I was talking about. So I would say because most of the buildings downtown that are the Art Nouveau are at least two stories and one of them, I guess, one of the three stories burned. But anyway, I would say that we definitely want to go, uh, brick two stories. And then, you know, uh, if we had more three stories, I would have said three stories. And then at three stories, the weird thing happens anyway, because unless you're sky gazing, your eyes only take in up to about the third floor. So beyond that, um, a change is actually probably a good thing, or at least not going to be, um, uh, it's not going to be in your main vision. And so it won't be a part of your, of your image of the, um, of the downtown as you're walking down the street. So, um, I would say at least two for brick just to stay in consistent with the, um, with the other buildings, uh, along the street.
Commissioner Maddox.
Um, I agree with that generally. I wonder if it might be, uh, more useful to instead of mandating two stories, uh, because the, the commercial floor or the, the, the first commercial story is going to be a tall story anyway, like, uh, I think you're required to have like twelve foot ceilings or something. I don't know exactly or how it shakes out, but, um, it might be that like whatever's on that that same plane as the first story. So if it goes up two stories and then steps back, um, or, or, you know, if it only went up one story, uh, but it was a tall first story and then step back, it might be appropriate to have a different material uh, on the, on the section that wasn't on the exact street level. Does that make sense? I feel a little bit like I'm not speaking super clearly about what's in my head, but um, John, do you understand what I'm saying? I
I caught the first half and then I, I think I, I, I got lost. I, I was understanding when you set up to say, um, the building next door has brick on the first and second stories. So using the, you know, if we put in requirements that, uh, the modulation requirement saying, so, um, well, if there's brick on two stories in the building next door, you should go brick on two stories on this new building too. Um, and then I, then you were talking about step backs, which I also think makes a lot of sense, say, um, if it steps, if you step the building back, then you're, uh, you know, no point in doing brick any longer. I don't know how many step backs we're going to see because that, uh, construction type gets a little tricky when you, uh, put your plane of the wall in a few feet. Now you, you, you have to figure out how to support that, that wall. Um, so it complicates the, the structure on a, you know, two or three story building. But go from there. I would, I, I would like you to explain a little further.
Well, I think that was the gist of it was just that like, assuming that the uh, facade of the building is built out to the property line, which would be like storefront sidewalk. That, that vertical plane, like whatever's in that vertical plane in the first two stories has to be brick and then but it might, if there was a situation where the building only the first story was on that plane and then the second story stepped back, that maybe it would be allowed that the second story would be of a different sort of exterior finished material. So, um, but I, I, I do appreciate the, uh, language about just matching, like if, if there's an all brick building, that's two or three stories tall, that you have to sort of match that. So I, I don't know how to word that exactly.
Commissioner Huggins.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I understand, uh, Silas is saying, um, that, that's a good thought. Um, also there's, um, unfortunately I don't have the wording and I haven't, um, looked at the, uh, Snohomish and the other, uh, things to do, but, but if you look at some of the new Northwest style buildings and in older cities that are multi-block downtowns, you know, where you have a consistent theme for, for more than one block, um, they make usually the, the owners of the buildings probably just did it. I don't, because I don't think they had design standards back then or, um, or building code requirements, but but, um, they made the, uh, the buildings on the corners, um, were usually more, um, articulated, you know, because they had, they had the corner. Uh, I guess the best example I can give of that is, uh, half of it's gone now, but, um, but the building that was last, uh, Los Pasanos was, uh, Seattle First National Bank before that. And, you know, it, it's oriented, has a little cutoff on the, on the corner and it goes up, I think, believe it's three stories, maybe it's just two. But, um, but anyway, so it had awnings that came around the front and then, um, and then it had the space, which actually which is where Santa Claus's booth was when I was a kid, uh, it sat right there in that niche on the corner. But anyway, the point I'm making is, is that, um, they made them put some emphasis or they just realized that they had to have some emphasis there on the corner facing that street because it's being looked at, uh, on two directions by everybody at the intersections. Um, while they're waiting to cross the streets and then, um, also we, it'd be good if they didn't, like the building that just burned down there, um, it faced Medcalf, but it had nothing facing Woodworth. And in most, uh, cities where there's multi-block, uh, buildings with the style right up to now with the new, um, Northwest style, uh, they would make it so that, uh, it faced, um, or it was designed so that I'm not wording myself well tonight. Now all of a sudden, um, so that you fronted both streets. You didn't just cut one off and make it a blank brick wall. You, you, you had, you had to face both the side street and the main street that, uh, that you're doing. So anyway, those are two things that we need to think about because we have three of those intersections. We have the State Street, Medcalf Street intersection, uh, which would be a great place to have, uh, that emphasis. We have the Woodworth, Metcalf Street intersection where it would be good to have the corner lots be, uh, you know, well-designed facing both streets. And then we have the Ferry Street, uh, Metcalf Street. Uh, is another one where we, we would, you would want to do that, make it like a node. I guess we call them art nodes in architecture. And then I would suggest that the code go all the way on down Medcalf Street, um, as we build new buildings. Uh, at least just on Medcalf Street with the same, uh, theme as, uh, whatever, um, we come up with for the, for the downtown. I think the city hall fits in just fine and, um, and if you look at, um, styles and styles and you look at, um, Mullen and Oaks, uh, those buildings have a lot of class in them and they fit our, Art Nouveau style. And that kind of stuff could be going down the, um, the, uh, the rest of the way down, uh, Medcalf Street. So a lot more stuff. And I'm sorry, I don't have ideas. Maybe I can come up with some, uh, some ideas or pictures or wording to, to give to you to express what I tried to.
You know, Woolly Market kind of fits a lot of the things we're talking about with the amount of glass as well as the, uh, existing brick. So what would be good, I guess, as we move on through here is to actually look at specific buildings as examples of how we will want to codify that going forward, because we have some great examples already. So why reinvent the wheel, uh, you know, and then go off of something that's already worked and it's consistent with what our vision is. Anyway, I think, did anybody else have their hand up? Do we want to still move on now to, we've got a lot to think about, granted, onto sign design. Draft amendments to the sign design section have not yet been proposed, so it's an open slate here, people.
Well, yeah, there, there's nothing to look at there. So nothing really to comment on.
I guess that is an open slate.
I do have a comment though, if it's appropriate, um, just kind of doing what was done with the above sections and taking those three items in the boxes there and making them into basically, um, it looks like you already started with that, um, you know, either standards or guidelines. Just changing the formatting on that and re-
I plan to borrow liberally from other jurisdictions signs.
So, but we're, we're talking about intent, standards and guidelines is what you're, what you're speaking to, right?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Now that, that, not three specific things within standards, just that format.
Well, well, yeah, I, I was just looking at items one, two, and three, uh, that's under the guidelines that are in blue there that don't have anything added in there. I'm just thinking though, that was, will probably be put into a format similar to the others where I, I don't know. It's just, uh, I think they can be uh, reworked to be clearer about what, what's being looked at there, but, uh, I don't know. It might just be a what's that?
Can you give an example? Like pick number two, what, what specifically would you like to see, uh, how that would be potentially reworded or, uh?
And those three, those three requirements used to be requirements. Those were standards. And then eight or nine, 10 years ago, council uh, changed all the shells to be shoulds. Made it, uh, made it guidelines.
Yeah, the, the original, the original layout of the, of the document was here's our intent. And then standards were things you absolutely had to do and guidelines were like choose from this menu or, um, or we would like to see these things. Uh, and that I think it didn't work to say we'd like to see these things. So.
Well, maybe, maybe that's not practical then. I was so, uh, well, item two, I don't know that it would need to be reworded specifically that one, but I was just thinking taking it out of the boxes because it's so it's more of an aesthetic thing, I guess.
Don't worry about formatting stuff yet. We, we've taken no, we've made no attempt to address the sign section.
Yeah.
We, all we did is threw in those placeholders, standards and guidelines.
Yeah.
Commissioner Huggins, I thought you had your, your hand up just a second ago.
Um, I was just going to piggyback on your, your comment about, um, about the, um, uh, uh, Woolly Market and I was going to say that the, uh, another really good example in town, um, that we can use is it's very, it's old, but at the, the Wixon Hotel, which is, some people know is the Gateway Building. The, uh, where, um, it, it, it addresses both streets. It addresses Ferry Street and it addresses Metcalf Street. In fact, sometimes it's hard to tell which one of those streets would be the main entrance, if there was a main entrance to, to the hotel, if it was still a hotel. Uh, so it, that's what I'm talking about, addressing both streets. And then the one place that kind of missed the boat in my mind is just that that corner that faces the intersection, uh, would have been a great, you know, place for, um, some kind of special feature, you know? Today that would be the big screen, massive big screen, New York Times Square TV or something, I suppose, but, uh, but you know what I'm saying? That, that, that there's a special feature on that, on that corner. So that's all I was going to add.
The code, that, that screen would not be consistent with our new code on illuminated screens. Anyone else? Okay, with the, we have a lot to think about. So would we like to move on to planning commission discussion and information items? John, I know you had quite a bit to say and I'd love to hear what's going on in planning and development services right now myself. Are we good? Move on? Okay. You got the floor.
Well, you've given me a lot to digest and, uh, synthesize into the design standards. So thank you for such a, a detailed and thoughtful discussion. Um, we made a lot of progress today. I hope I took good enough notes because wow, uh, they got a lot of work here. So, uh, the, then just kind of nuts and bolts of stuff. But thinking in, uh, next August, we're probably, we're still going to be by Zoom. For a couple of purposes. One is I won't be in town, so, uh, I won't be here to, to open up the building for everybody. So it's just basically a logistical thing. Uh, I'm not sure where the council is going to be in August, if they're going to be having it in person yet. There's, uh, that, that's something that's going on at a much higher level and we'll just wait to see, but, uh, August planning commission's going to have to be, um, by Zoom or I won't be there and won't be able to have a meeting. And then of course, uh, we lost Catherine. Uh, she's uh, oh, she's done working at, at the office and she's preparing for her, her big trip. So, uh, she's too busy. Surprised, surprised she didn't show up tonight. That would have been kind of funny. Uh, if she showed up on Zoom, but she did not. We just today received, uh, the, we had made an offer to a, a new assistant planner and just today received letter from her saying, stating that, yes, she's accepting the job and she'll be starting in, uh, early August and her name is Nicole McGowan. So you'll get to meet her soon, maybe in, maybe not in person for a little while, but our office is open. So, um, it is possible to come by and harass the planning department now if the planning commission so chooses. Uh, no, no more than three at a time. Otherwise we have a quorum though, so. Uh, come by, say hi. Michelle would love to see you. We'd like to see you. Uh, it's been a long time since we've been face to face with any of the planning commission members. So, uh, fortunately we do this by Zoom, so I still don't remember what you look like at least, uh. So, um, it then just in general, uh, stuff, like updates with the, what's going on is there's so much building activity going on, uh, it's, it's hard to, to even remember all of the projects, um. So the, you know, the, the RJ Group building over at Stendal and Hodgins is under construction. They've started the, the footing and underground plumbing on that. So that one's moving ahead. That's in the urban village mixed use and uh, then we still, there's another one at the corner of Trail and, uh, Trail and Stendal, that is a little bit smaller. It's a sixty-seven unit mixed use. That's, uh, Trail and Stendal, that is a little bit smaller. It's 67 unit mixed use. That's through BYK. And they're they submitted revised plans recently, so that one is looking, still moving forward. And then you've probably seen the Pioneer Marketplace building addition. The on the southern end of that, there's the part of the building they don't use that's proposed to be taken down because it's vacant now. And you'll you'll probably be here about that one because that one's going to affect downtown a lot. So I wanted to let you know that, you know, there's a CBD. It's commercial on the main floor and I think it's three stories total, 17 units total. Yeah, three stories, 17 units on the upper floors total. And that's, there's public notice out on that.
Where where again and where again and and facing?
Pioneer Marketplace, you know, the the southern part of that building is actually unused, the the side that faces State Street. Only about 20 feet wide, the part that they don't use. Next time you go by, you'll see like, oh, yeah, look at the roof. One part. And then there's a separate section that doesn't have nice new roofing. And so that would be removed and a brick building with commercial on the downstairs facing State Street and the parking lot. And then residential above. So that's that's the big downtown thing going on that you've pro, I imagine you've probably heard about because people have been asking about it.
In general, by the end of the year, how many new single family detached houses do we have going in? Doc Campbell has that massive one down.
Doc Campbell is not involved in that. He sold that property before it ever got developed, before it ever got subdivided.
So how many units, how many single family?
That's 85, 50, 85 lots. And that's BYK and they're 55 and over.
And in total, citywide, because we got a lot of stuff going on, what are we looking at? Maybe about 150 units?
Single family?
Yeah.
Yeah.
About, right? And then on the multifamily.
I I I should know, but we've we've, it's hard to have a crystal ball to know if they're if they're going to continue to do, you know, four starts a month at each of these projects. Because, you know, we still have Cambridge Commons going, building. They're they're not slowing down. You've seen the the new trail road connection, which is actually the the western leg of of Garden of Eden Road. That's so, you know, our Garden of Eden comes down off the hill and dead ends at Jones Road. Now it no longer dead ends. It continues through. Right. And they're building houses there and they're doing, you know, four starts a month, is it? Maybe more.
We're looking at probably close to 2,000 or more new residents within the next 18 months.
I'd have to do the estimate. But, you know, it's within our growth expectations.
Oh, I'm not saying.
Still just a little bit over our our, over the past three years, we're just a skosh over the anticipated pace of of growth. And so, you know, these things go in fits and spurts.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, if we're a little bit over now, that we can expect a slowdown at some point.
Yeah.
It's not going to continue like that for 20 years. You know, because that's a 20 year projection. But, you know.
I'm sure glad it waited this long to happen. We were, it was supposed to happen in 2003. And we had a sewer moratorium and that gave us almost eight years to get our ducks in a row because our old design standards would have allowed basically anything, anything goes, the the old stuff from the from 1995. So anyway, the onslaught is here now, but I think we're as so much better prepared than we were in in 2001 when I went on. I hope we get some some good results. We'll see.
Commissioner Fournette?
John, maybe you can answer this. Several years ago, we were granted $30 million to put John Liner through to whatever it is out here, West Jones. And they're going to do the tunnel there, close sap and put in a roundabout at Trail Road and Cook and go through the school yard there where the FNS grade, I haven't seen any iota of that yet. Is that still going to happen?
So we did not get $30 million. We requested $30 million to do all of that. And we didn't get it. Not surprisingly, right? You know, it was a long shot, but you know, you heard all the pilings being driven for over at the over at the railroad about a month ago, they spent a week and a half driving pilings. So they can build a tunnel under the railroad tracks to connect Jones to John Liner. We still need to find money to build the actual build and finish design of of that underpass. But Mark Freiberger is working on it and making great steps. And then you were talking about the continuation of Jones, John Liner down through the schoolyard. The the facilities building, that's not going to work. There's some technical and financial problems with that. So that road is continued. You see, the the first section has been built, trail road that I was just explaining a few minutes ago, has been built. Then there'll need to be a connection from there south through, you know, a couple of properties there. And then there's the Bucko Platt, the Bucko Property. They they have an active application for 65 lot subdivision in the Bucko Property. And that will continue that trail road through. Not through the schoolyard, though, but through the the Bucko Property, it'll actually have to carry east a little bit, unfortunately. And then make its way to Cook Road and come out around, right around the physical therapy place. So that's the 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 road alignment that Public Works Department has been working on now.
Okay, and is there, there was word of a gas station going in at Cook and Trail? Is that true?
Yeah, we have an approved building permit for that and they're working on either financing or, you know, some other last details of that before they pick it up and start building.
And if I can add one more thing, one of my biggest concerns was Cook Road backups. It's getting worse and worse. I remember commenting that we need some way to get to the freeway. And there was talk about the state coordinating with our growth to help the traffic. And I haven't seen any activity there at all. But if you don't get to Cook Road before 6:30, you wait quite a while to get over the railroad tracks.
In the morning?
Yeah, yeah. And coming home is not much easier.
Yeah, so the the regional transportation planning, the SCOG, plan, the SCOG transportation people are working on the regional stuff, but that that is, the Cook Road is a county issue. And because of its nexus with the interstate, it actually involves the state because they manage that intersection up to Old 99.
Commissioner Huggins?
I was just going to say the, yeah, the way the way you did, as soon as you say you're going to put a moratorium and you're not going to build anything, then you they will start finding a way to get money to you. But as long as you keep building, they will do it. The same with the sewer, as soon as we have the sewer moratorium, they start throwing money at us to with Mark's help, I'm not downplaying what Mark had to do to to get it. But but once you applied for it, you got it. Once you said, we're not building anything until until we get this problem solved. And so transportation is the same thing. If you just say too much traffic, can't do it. They will, and you apply for the grants, you'll start getting them.
There is a large, there is a large regional effort to to fix that Cook Road intersection. Everybody in the county knows it's a problem and they're working on it. It's just a tough nut to crack with the the railroad there. Even if you get the stoplights working, flowing well, or it doesn't back up any traffic, throw in a train and everything, you know, all your all your transportation planning comes crashing down at the mercy of the railroad.
The mercy of the railroad. And it is.
You don't want to be at the mercy of the railroad.
Mercy of the railroad. Okay, is there anything else anyone? This will be your time. This is a great conversation. Nothing? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Someone?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, I believe, for segmented by Commissioner Pedo. Meeting is now adjourned at 8:12 tonight. Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.